Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Ginn.
Here.
And Height.
Present.
Former as present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be by Councilmember Robinson.
Spout our heads, please. Father God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for another opportunity to take care of business on behalf of the citizens and residents of North Little Rock. I ask that you be in our midst. I ask that you give us wisdom so that we'll be able to take care of the business. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation, our God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Thank you.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
Height.
Yes. Thank you very much. I'm showing two communications. Anybody want to pull one? Singman, how about a motion? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Yes, until we get it finished, we've got new parts coming in and we'll be able to, it'll be more like what we had before. Okay, we've got public comment on legislation. First one is Nick Frankie on R 19133. Three minutes, please.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I know nobody likes numbers. Numbers are boring, but we have to live by numbers. Bloomberg Analytics says that Maverick Trucking is on target to make $405 million this year. Oakley Trucking is on target to make $225 million this year. NorthLittleRock.gov says our budget, we brought in approximately $69 million this year. ZillowIndeed.com and Wikipedia all say the average income for North Little Rock resident is $47,000. The median value of an owned home is $77,000. Combined, almost 10 times income is our city, is what these two trucking companies make, that were proposing for the taxpayers of North Little Rock to pay for their jet hangars. Do we want, you want us to pay for a complex that is about 50 times more expensive than the median home? Just to house some corporate airplanes? You want us to pay, you want us to pay for corporations that make about 1,000 times more than the average income of your North Little Rock resident, citizen? Let Oakley Maverick and Homers build their own hangars and restaurants if it's that lucrative of a deal, it's that big of a deal to them. Zero is another number we need to keep in mind. That's how many cities in Arkansas support any of the 97 publicly owned airports in Arkansas, except for one. The city of North Little Rock. We give them about $100,000 every year. Welfare. They need, I'm all for improving the infrastructure. The city of North Little Rock, we don't pay for I-30 going through or Fordy going through. Federal government taxes us in federal ways, the same thing. The airport improvement projects is the federal way that the federal government pays for improving airports like this. And the Arkansas Department of Aeronautics, we already pay taxes to build hangars and stuff, make improvements at the airport. We need to use that money to fix our roads, to fix our potholes, fix our sidewalks, after-school projects. Do, maybe do a little bit more for homeless people instead of homeless jets. And I'd also like to say that it's kind of, you guys are putting the cart before the horse. There is no instrument landing system at the North Little Rock Airport. There's no precision approach at the North Little Rock Airport. There's no precision approach lighting system at the North Little Rock Airport. So, last year there was 178 days that that airport could not have been used by these corporate jets. So, I think it's a little foolish. I don't know where the $10,000 that we've already voted for back in February to give to making a plan, where's that plan at? And the $50,000 that the mayor said that the North Little Rock Airport brought in last year, his budget director doesn't know where it's at. It's non-existent. We gave the North Little Rock Airport $100,000 out of the city budget last year and they didn't give us anything back. Thank you.
Bernadette Conley, R 19133.
Good evening to the council. I am here speaking against this legislation. And the reason why I'm speaking against it is I feel like if we have this type of money to spend, we have an area in North Little Rock that has looked the same since I was 59 years old and that's East Broadway. I feel like if we can spend millions, we can spend millions on infrastructure and try to bring East Broadway up to look like, to look like the other wards in our area. There's nothing on East Broadway for anyone to come down to after any type of entertainment concert or anything. Probably nobody in here has any reason to come to Ward 2 for anything. And anything we want in Ward 2, we're having to leave our ward to go to other wards. So I feel like money should be better spent on bringing up East Broadway. In all my years of travel, I've never seen an East Broadway look like that. And it's ridiculous. And I know our two aldermen cannot do it alone. But we've gone through Patrick Hayes and we've gone through this and nobody has not one time said anything about any legislation on this fixing up East Broadway. I was at a meeting once before, you told me that East Broadway was a business district. I asked you, did you have a plan? You said there was no 10 or 15-year plan to ever do anything to East Broadway. And I think that is unfair. You also said when businesses come in that they want to see rooftops. Ward 2 is the biggest ward we have and there's plenty of rooftops. And there's no reason East Broadway should be looking the way it is and we have the same taxpayers. So I've watched us spend millions of dollars on plazas, on everything else, but no one has not yet said, let's do something for East Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug McDowell.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Doug McDowell. I live in Ward 4. And since moving in, I moved into Arkansas in 1979, lived in North Little Rock ever since. And I've had an airplane out of the North Little Rock Airport all that time. I'd like to speak on the proposal to make improvements on the airport. One of which is to permit a restaurant to be built out there, which will bring in extra business to the, to the city and to the North Little Rock Airport FBOs that are out there now. When most people are flying cross-country in a small airplane and it's long, it's, their flight path is longer than the range of the aircraft, they have to make a fuel stop somewhere. Aviation fuel is very expensive. And they usually make their fuel stop where there's a restaurant on the field. If nothing more than to have a cup of coffee and a piece of pie and get 50 or 60 gallons of gas and go on to their next stop. We're not getting that business at North Little Rock because there's not a restaurant on the field. Now, if you go out to the restaurants in Sherwood on 107 any day during the noon hour, you'll see hundreds of people in them wearing uniforms that work at Camp Robinson. They drive past our airport over to Sherwood and Sherwood's getting that restaurant revenue. They wouldn't all eat at the North Little Rock Airport restaurant every day out of the week, but I'll bet they'd eat there at least one out of five, you know, when they're off work at noon to go out for lunch. And I'm just in favor of this airport improvement issue that would include a restaurant out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, that's it for public comments. Let's go into unfinished business.
Oh 1977, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance 7697, the zoning ordinance to conform to Act 446 of the 92nd Arkansas General Assembly, first reading.
How about a motion? I think we've got some amendments to.
Second.
Was that a motion to suspend the ratings? Because I think this is the first time it's been read.
Was it? Ms. Ross. It's a motion to suspend all readings. And we had a second here. On a motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
Height.
Yes. Okay, let's talk about our.
I'm on now. After this was drafted, it was drafted in response to Act 446, which the legislature passed this year. And I, our office had worked with planning on, on going through this. And the first time it was on the agenda, I sat down to compare it to Act 446, which put restrictions on the residential design standards that cities can impose. And with some of the amendments we had made to the zoning code and found out that we had deleted too many things. And so I'm going to go through, if you all will just keep up with me, on page 2, under section 1.9, on B, the section on setbacks. Instead of that being deleted from the current zoning code, we're going to keep that in because Act 446 doesn't deal with setbacks. It doesn't restrict setbacks. The second change on page 3, section J landscaping, shows that being deleted from the existing code and that needs to be left in. On page 4, about halfway down, section 1.6A, in the middle of that section, it shows front yard covered porches shall be allowed within seven feet of the front property line. And it shows that being deleted, that needs to be left in. D fencing, that needs to be left in. And then on page 5, all of those marked in red, that 1, 2, 3, and 4, all of those need to be left in. The rest of the things need to be amended as reflected and I apologize that I brought it to you like this. But if we could have those amendments, then we're going to be compliant with Act 446.
Does that include renumbering?
Yes, we'll renumber and make everything the right numbers. I don't want to, I don't think we need to go through all that though.
Okay. You want to make that amendment, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
We got a motion to amend. How about a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. How about a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Oh 1984, Mayor Smith.
The, not that it matters, but probably I should have had this put on there as for consideration only because I don't know that I'm in favor of it. Please call it.
An ordinance approving the application of Park Hill Pump Incorporated for a private club to be located at 4608 JFK Boulevard, North Little Rock, second reading.
Spend readings, anybody? Have a second. A motion to suspend the rest of the readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. All right, let's, let's get it on the table to, a motion to adopt. Somebody give it to me, let's vote.
So moved. Second.
May I do have one quick, is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? No ma'am. On the motion.
I just want to say, the applicant has not been here anytime or, so I don't know if they have any interest in this or what. So I haven't been able to get any more information on this.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
No.
White.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Robinson.
No.
Baxter.
No.
Harris.
No.
Ginn.
No.
And Height.
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you very much.
Oh 1990, Councilmember Baxter.
Hold that again, please.
Okay. New business, R 19130, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving retroactive salary increases for the period of January 12, 2019, to May 31, 2019, for full-time salaried employees excluding uniformed police personnel, uniformed fire personnel, IT employees who received a salary adjustment 2019, and elected officials and the police, I'm not through reading. And the police and fire chiefs, the assistant police and fire chiefs, the fire battalion chiefs, and the fire marshal of the city of North Little Rock. Now.
Ms. Ross.
Yeah, this is wonderful. I agree with 100% and I'm glad that we can do this. But, and I understand that the elected official, us up here, not receiving this. But I do, I have some concerns that our city clerk Diane Whitby and our city attorney Amy Fields are not included in this. I know Diane was, you know, during, if this is a thank you for the flood, all the work that was done. I know these two, they carried a huge weight during that time. They spent a lot of time. So I would like to amend that their salaries are retroactive too. I do, I did get the cost from it. It's $2,050 that would be added to the total of this. But I would like, also like to make theirs retroactive.
How about, take theirs amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion.
On the motion to amend, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. About a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 19131, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending Resolution Number 9568, 2019 budget to amend the fiscal year budget for a 2.5% pay increase retroactive from January 12, 2019, to May 31, 2019, to current full-time, non-uniform, salaried, classified employees excluding uniformed police personnel, uniformed fire personnel, and IT employees who received a salary adjustment in 2019, the police and fire chiefs, the assistant police and fire chiefs, the fire battalion chiefs, and the fire marshal of the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And I have an amendment. Under, under the amendments, the totals down there to add to the general fund, $2,050.
A motion to amend to add $2,050. Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 19132, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement to rehabilitate property located at 3320 East Broadway Street.
So moved.
Second.
Give me just a minute.
Okay.
Help me on this just a little bit. What is it?
It's, it's the old warehouse liquor. It was up for condemnation and the, the owners wanted to enter into a rehab, a rebit on it.
Oh, okay. All right, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R 19133, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution expressing an intent to issue revenue bonds in the amount of $4 million, $4,500,000 for the purpose of financing improvements to the North Little Rock Airport.
Move for adoption. Second.
The, needless to say, we've been working on this for quite some time. I see a bunch of our airport commissioners here. I want to say thank you for all of y'all, to all y'all for your service to this commission. You know, it's a volunteer position and y'all work really hard. And you've really worked hard on trying to put this together to make our airport something really special. So I do appreciate, I want to say thank you for that. I think everybody knows what we've done. They've read this legislation. They've seen the drawings. One comment that I got out of one aeronautics person out of Dallas said that this is a game changer for our city and our airport and I thoroughly believe that. So, any other comments on this?
Did we ever, on the restaurant, did we ever find out if that is a complete build-out or is that just a shell?
No, they, the restaurant is going to do the build-out.
Okay.
They get a shell. They will pay the X number of dollars, which I think a number he was throwing around, some of y'all, correct me if I'm wrong, was probably close to a half a million dollars. Anybody back there remember those numbers? Does that sound about right, Mark? Yeah, Alan? That he's going to put in himself. Rick Ashley, who leases to a tremendous amount of restaurants, is going to help us decide what's a fair price to negotiate with him. And I'll bring that back to you. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on board on this before I sat down and negotiated. And I'll bring those contracts back on the FBO and the restaurant. I'm going to guess in the next 30 days. Ms. Ginn. Mr. Michael.
I'm in agreement that North Little Rock could use some more business. And if the airport will help it, I'm all for it. I'd like to support a proposal that if it's successful and helps our city to grow, I am for it. We all recognize that North Little Rock is very much a place for economic development. So that our city doesn't just dwindle away. I ate at Homer's Restaurant this week and I had a grilled tilapia meal and it was fantastic. It was very good. It was reasonably priced. And so I'm thinking of the people that might eat at that restaurant in North Little Rock. Might come from Plasky Tech, students who are there at the airport. Like you said, Camp Robinson servicemen, NES, you know, those people, local. I think if we're going to have an airport, it ought to be a nice one. And all these things said, I have some other things I want to say. A good procedure for any business is to like lease the land and then build their own hangar. I disagree that taxpayers of the city of North Little Rock ought to have to pay to build the hangars. I couldn't find another city in Arkansas, help me if I'm wrong, that does this. If we want to approve 4.5 million plus, it needs to be profitable and serve a large portion of our city. Now, if you take off some of those hangars, we take off also $64,000 in revenue every year. So I'm not for that either. But since the recent flood, this is what happened. Our streets are in greater need right now than they were before the flood. And I came up to our city engineer and I asked about Batesville Pike and the traffic and parking around Crestwood Elementary, which we had talked about months ago. But since the flood, it's been postponed for a year. Now, I'm thinking that we increase taxes so that things would get paid on the streets. And I am here as a representative for the majority of the people in North Little Rock, who only less than 1% ever has stepped foot probably on the North Little Rock Airport, much less use it. So these are some things that I wanted to say. I'm not sold yet on the need for a new FOB. I don't think they have plumbing problems or roofing leaks or rotten wood. I think maybe we could just upgrade it, the walls and the furniture and make it look nice. Do some landscaping. I don't believe that businesses make their final decision on coming to our city based on the need for a new FOB and a restaurant. I just don't think they do. Especially with the Little Rock Airport only about 20 to 30 minutes away. Now let's say something else positive. Our airport is the largest GA in Arkansas. That says a lot. It's mostly used as a business hub. The land is owned by Camp Robinson with the stipulation that we use it as an airport. So as of Benton, when they, Benton, Arkansas, when they, they sold their airport. And Bryant, you know, took that. We're not going to be able to do that because it's not owned by the city. And of course, the biggest leasers that Clay Rogers told me, the airport manager said, were Maverick Trucking, Centennial Bank, and Sport Air. I heard the other day that if there was a market demand for a restaurant at the airport, a private company would have built one by now. Because there's a restaurant all over our town. And nobody's come up with wanting to build one. I would like to know what would happen if the restaurant goes under. And are we going to be able to find another restaurant that would lease it? And how much of it's ours? The table, the chairs, the appliances and whatnot. There's some things that are a little bit unanswered. The meals for the pilots, it's kind of funny, but it could be solved by using Uber. Have somebody just bring them a meal. They could tell them that they're fixing to land and somebody can just bring them a meal. That would save us a lot of money for that restaurant. I'm not real sure if, it's kind of an isolated area, if Sherwood and North Little Rock could support a restaurant there. I'm not sold on that. So I would, I'm against for sure the restaurant. I would like to know how long the lease on the restaurant is, how much it is. Is a feasibility study in order to determine if it could be profitable and who owns everything? And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Councilmember Ginn has certainly been thorough in her comments and I won't repeat anything she said. But I want to say that I had a chance probably two years ago when some of the council members traveled around the immediate area around our, Little Rock. And we toured some airports and there were some truly amazing ones. I mean, it was just amazing. And we ate at a restaurant that was in one of them. And I, I certainly recognize when I come back to North Little Rock to see what we have. I, my son's an aerospace engineer and I've always felt flight was important, anything to do with flight. So it's not a small thing for me. But I am getting more response from the community that they didn't, they don't feel that the money that we're saying we want to spend on the airport renovations or really rebuilding it are something they want to see happen with our taxpayers' money. So I'm going to say that I'm sad to say that at this time I couldn't support this legislation.
Ms. Ross?
I think that the biggest determining factor for me on my vote is obligating ourselves for 15 years for $408,000. That's the additional payment, bond payment on top of the Justice Building. Is it $408,000 for 15 years? I don't want to obligate, I mean, the need's there, I'm sure. I'm sure that we can do this in phases. We don't have to go out and do the full amount all at one time. And so for that is the obligation that we're putting on the future generation. Because we won't be here in 15 years. Maybe a few of you will be, but I don't see any of us being here. Okay, Mari, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Height?
Mayor, I have been thinking about this for several months now. And I even gave an Arkansas Democrat Gazette a quote last week that, that Saturday night, my wife and I were having dinner and I got, I got to credit my wife Becky with helping me see the light on this airport legislation. And, and she and I both discussed the following, is that I've, I've been down here for, I've been down here for 19 years. I came on board, I came on city council right after the Verizon or Arena, Ortel Arena at the time it came on. But shortly after I, down here, we came up with legislation that created the sales tax that created the ballpark. And I was all in on that. And that's something that's, that we don't have in Ward 4. We don't have a ballpark in Ward 4. But I've been supportive of things that have gone on in, in a lot of the other wards. The new police and courts buildings that are going to be built down there where the former armory was. I've been fully supportive of that. I've been fully supportive of the jump start programs up in Park Hill and Levy. I've been fully supportive of the efforts to build a plaza down there. I've been fully supportive of building the 600 main building plus the, our building, the Plaza building. It's, it's going to be built hopefully in the near future. I was all in on the Senior Citizen Center, Hay Senior Citizen Center, fully supportive of that. The various things that have happened at Burns Park in my 19 years, I've been all in on that. Ballparks and the River Trail and, and I've been helpful with that. The roundabout that we built down here in The roundabout that we built down here in, on Pike Avenue and where Broadway, man, I was all in on that. It all takes money. I was in on the infrastructure funding for Rockwater Boulevard down there here recently. Any city parks that we put in, in the various wards, I've been in on that. The Boys and Girls Clubs, I've always supported that. The library, I've always been supportive of that. The recreation centers that are in all the wards, I've been supportive of that. And Argent, downtown Argent, Main Street, I've been supportive of that. But all those things that I just listed, we have none of that in Ward Four, but we do have an airport. We do have an airport, and this is the first time that I, in my 19 years, that I've had a chance to vote for something that funds a city-owned entity in my ward that has, is capable of producing revenue. We don't know if the restaurant's gonna be successful or not, but any, any restaurant owner that opens up a restaurant, it's a roll of the dice. He doesn't know if it's gonna be in business a year or two. You know, 95% of all new restaurants fail anyway, so. But I'm, I like Homer's. I like Homer's, you know. I'd rather drive to the North Little Rock Airport, eat at Homer's than I had out, out by, on Roosevelt or out in West Little Rock. So because of that, I'm gonna be a little bit selfish in my support of the airport, is that I see a way of the city funding something that we consider the biggest asset in our ward, and that's our airport. And if we're gonna be in the airport business, let's get in the airport business. An airport's gonna be there a long time after I'm gone. It's gonna be there a long time after y'all are gone. Who knows what kind of revenue it's capable of producing or gonna produce? Who knows if that restaurant's gonna be in operation, but we gotta give them a chance. So I'm voting yes on the airport tonight, Mayor.
You know, everything you, you mentioned, you think about, you know, public investment creates private investment. I mean, there's not a one that you mentioned, I mean, look at what the Plaza's done. Look what Rockwater Boulevard did, you know, and good gracious, you know, they're getting ready to break ground, I think sometime in the next 30 days, on that big, huge complex down by the ballpark. It's, you know, probably a $20 million investment, you know, maybe 300 new people living there. So this is more the same. We're, this is economic development at its best, and I think it's great. I'm ready, ready to vote if y'all are. Ms. Ross?
I have one more thing to say with restaurant background. We talk about, you know, is this restaurant gonna bring in more money? In the restaurant, there's, there's a, there's a pot of money that people have to eat out. And if you take that from one restaurant, you're, and you open a new restaurant, you're taking away from that restaurant. So the only new money that you're gonna have is anyone that's flying in. You know, we're talking about bringing in people from other locations. Sherwood, North Little Rock, we go back and forth, everybody, East Sherwood, North Little Rock, back and forth. But it's not, I mean, there's a limited amount of number of money that people have that they have to go out with, and unless we're getting new residents or higher-income residents, that pot's not gonna change.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
No.
Height?
Yes.
The mayor?
Mayor votes yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. We will bring you back some contracts here in the next 30 days. I feel very confident in that.
Next item, R19-134, Mayor Smith.
The next three are condemnations. One's, I'll call a public hearing on 5509 Chiquita, 5217 Chiquita, and 1220 West 18th. Anyone here to speak on that, on any three of those addresses? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Okay. 134, please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 5509 Chiquita Road in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to evade said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R19-135, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 5217 Chiquita Road in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to evade said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
R19-136, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1220 West 18th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to evade said nuisance.
You're for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R19-137, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass-planting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
You're for adoption.
Second.
Call the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on any of these liens that are being filed at Plasky County Tax Collector? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, O19-92, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing payment to Fleming Electric Incorporated for electrical services for the operation of generators and pumps, first reading.
Second.
There you go.
Motion to suspend all readings.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O19-93, Mayor Smith and Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at Bayou Drive in the planning jurisdiction of the city of North Little Rock from R2 zoning classification to planned unit development, PUD zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O19-94, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 9130, which granted a conditional use to allow a tattoo shop and an auto detail business in a C4 zone for property located at 923 East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Just a brief explanation, it, we talked about, this is the tattoo shop next to, the building next to Taco Bell. Originally, it was, there was a condition set on it to close one of the curb cuts, and there's, there's just not a viable reason to close one of the curb cuts. There's two curb cuts for entry, you know, ingress and, and.
Ingress.
Ingress on the property, thank you, Mayor. And it just didn't make any sense to, to change what's already there, so we're, that's what the amendment's about.
Ms. Ross?
Help me here, were these shipping containers in at the last time, or is this, are the shipping containers being added?
They were already in it.
Okay.
The curb cuts, they only changed.
Okay.
And hours.
Right.
Hours of operation.
To change them?
Yeah, it was wrong.
Uh-huh. Yeah, the original said midnight to 10:00 PM, and they're being changed from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I guess that's just a fix.
I guess it is.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? How about a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O19-95, Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use to allow a tattoo parlor in a C6 zone for property located at 112 Main Street in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Comment I'd like to make is that I attended the Argentah Neighborhood Group meeting, and we talked about the tattoo shop, and the people that were there are in favor of the tattoo shop, so it's gonna be a loss to us in Rose City, but they're still in Ward Two, but the people are looking forward to the tattoo shop.
If I may, I would like to take executive privilege and ask a question of the soon-to-be owner. Could you come up to the microphone? That's, it's Scott Diffey, right?
Yes, sir.
Scott, you know, my concern is, is not what goes on inside your building. You know, it's a form of art, and people can just express their art any way they want to. My concern is, I've seen a lot of tattoo parlors around that overkills neon lights and signs and things like that, that it, it kind of makes it more trashy than art. My question to you is, what are your plans, and are there any requirements in planning on what kind of?
Well, since I've been in business for 20 years here in North Little Rock, I've got great clientele, and I just want to keep it really low-key. I just want to have my name painted on the front windows, and maybe a strip of neon inside the building, because there's four windows outside, so if I put a strip of neon inside, it'll make those windows shine green, so that was all I was wanting to do with the outside.
Okay. Sean, do we have any requirements on what he can and cannot do in the, in this location?
Nothing that's not, that, for any other business in that area, so it'd be the same restrictions. So there, there was nothing to talk about if planning commission to add something on top of the existing rules.
All right. Well, is it a C6 rule? Is that what it is?
It is, yes, C6, so it, well, it'd just be for any commercial, so it'd be the same for all downtown, so we're, we're not in historic district. That's correct, so there's not really any, anything other than what the sign ordinance controls.
If you would, it'll be my, my request, that try to make it as tasteful as possible.
Yes, sir.
We want you to make money, and we want you to do well, but we also want, you know, you're gonna be almost the front door when visitors come across the bridge, and you're gonna be one of the first things they see.
Well, that's why I think it's, you know, important to make it look good, and brighten it up a little bit to be safe down there, because it is the last block, you know, and it gets dark down there, so we figured when you come off the bridge, we'd make it nice and lit up a little bit, not tacky at all, we don't want to do anything like that. We just want to put some, you know, nice bright lighting.
I've, I've got your commitment, and I believe you, and if you want my opinion, you call me.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
Wait, no, Scott, I had something for you, too. I think what the mayor's trying to say, we want the classiest tattoo parlor around.
Do we?
I've, I've been to several, I don't have any tattoos, because I chicken out every time.
Well, I'm the oldest, I'm the youngest, oldest licensed tattooist in Arkansas. I'm a founding member of the Arkansas Tattoo Association. So when I started in Arkansas, there was two people. The guy that taught me the tattoo formed all the rules and regulations for the Health Department, so we formed all that, so we have safe tattooing in the state of Arkansas. And you've got the best tattoo shop right here in Argentah, so we'll be classy.
So no, no chickens?
No chickens, no, no, not that, no, no.
No roosters signed?
Nope, nope, nope.
Okay.
We're, we're cleaning up, we're gonna split Rose City and come here to Argentah.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna be classy.
Make, make us proud, Scott.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about a motion to adopt? Yes, sir.
I got one comment, too. I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody, I've talked to one individual about the proposed tattoo shop, and I just, coming over the Main Street Bridge, first thing you see is a pawn shop, and now the next thing you're gonna see is either a beauty shop, a beauty shop, and then a, there's nothing wrong with a beauty shop, and then a tattoo parlor. And then we're trying to do things, outstanding things down the street, down there with the Plaza, and I know that Argentah Downtown Council and Main Street down there, I, I don't know, to me, to me, and you said a while ago, is that we're on the front door of people coming I mean, it's an acceptable practice of art right now, and, you know, it's kind of like I don't like the scooters either, but I think that... This gentleman, he's, you know, I have nothing against him, I hadn't even talked to him. I just don't, I just don't have, I'm just uncomfortable with putting a pawn shop at